All right. Let's bring the township's zoning board of appeals to order. One, article two, we will do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God. And in this law with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, I am three approval of the agenda. Entertained motion moved approved.
Support.
Motion and support on favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Article four approval of last year's November meeting minutes, it's been awhile. Any, any notes, uh, complex questions or comments?
Moved your proof minutes.
I'm a support.
Motion and support to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Article five, this is where we acknowledge any of the visitors in the audience that want to speak on non-agenda items. Uh, if you do come up. Name and address, concerns, questions. Anyone on video? All right, with that, we will close off article five and go to six, article six case twenty-three dash three seven four nine. Staff presentation.
Okay, so we have an application from Jim and Cam Stubber and they're here with Lisa. Um, they are at seventeen forty-nine. River Oaks Drive, um, and they are seeking, uh, variance. For a deck expansion that, uh, gets within their side yard setback. The. Existing home is fifteen from one side and eleven from the other. Um, and the proposed variance is to approve a deck being built six point three feet from the north side property line. Um, so the total setback would be seventeen point three feet. The minimum setback for the deck by right would be fourteen feet, so then after the calculations, the requested variance. Is for seven point seven feet, so the bottom right-hand corner here is where we see those. Updated proposed setbacks compared to the larger survey where we have the existing setback. The, uh, survey, I did have a note in here that they would be submitting an updated one, the updated one matched the current one. Um, besides that they found the actual stakes, so none of the setbacks have changed from the variance request as it was initially presented here. I just wanted to let you guys know that. Um, the proposed project is to essentially enclose the existing deck that they have. And then add on a deck. So that they have an enclosed family room and then a deck, um, sticking out into that setback. Um, so they would be going towards the north approaching the northern neighbor's garage, but they would still be about fifty feet from there. Um, and then when looking at the criteria for being able to grant the variance, we did. Note that there's lot is kind of irregularly shaped and the placement of the home, which is how they purchased it. Um. Is, is causing a hardship for them to be able to do this project. Um, and the plans that have been submitted are, uh, preliminary, so we don't have. Oh, they did just bring you some today, right? So you've got them all in front of you. Um, so I can't necessarily speak to all those, I'd refer to the applicant if you have questions on those documents since they came in this evening. Um, based on this information, I would recommend that you approve the variance. Um, because of the unique lot shape, um, and the. Conditions I would apply is that they couldn't down the road, then also enclose this deck. Um, and that proper building permits for the deck and family room be obtained prior to construction.
Uh, would the applicant like to present anything? Or I should say, any questions of staff?
No questions.
No questions, okay, would the applicant like to present anything? Comments, concerns?
I think Madison did a great job, we've got the blessing of neighbors on each side.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I did receive a formal, um. Submission of a public comment from the neighbor to the south. Saying that they supported the project and they didn't see any issue with it, I didn't hear from the neighbors to the north, but.
And the neighbor is the neighbor to the south, the nearest neighbor whose garage is?
No, so that neighbor would be down here, this garage is.
That's the name, and so we haven't heard from that neighbor from Warcon.
No, but I think you've spoken with them, yeah. They have an easement between their properties as well that kind of keeps them from ever encroaching too far.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't see this just later for public hearing, but I would assume that we are supposed to have a public hearing.
I would think so.
I noticed in both cases, it doesn't say public hearing, but they almost in.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do know that as public hearing on the agenda itself, so.
Oh, on the agenda, yes, okay, good, good. Well, I have a move we're going to public hearing.
All right, or, uh, motion and support to go into public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we are now in the open public hearing. Um, if anyone in the public would like to come forward and speak. Regarding this matter.
Madison, you said there weren't any other comments that you got?
Just the neighbor to the south who called in today.
To address your concern Jennifer, the house that's close to it, the garage. That house is, um, actually closer to the river, so we'll still be way in front of the deck, so it would never, it would come there and you wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone on video?
Okay, we're gonna close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearings.
Support.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries, we'll bring it back to the board. For deliberation.
Uh, I think there are exceptional conditions here, Mr. Chairman, and, um, the staff has done a good job of going through the findings of fact. And with that, um, I recommend we approve. The variance with the conditions stated by staff, are you good with the conditions?
I would support that, we have a motion and support on the, on the item.
I, I would just like to say, I did go out and visit the site this afternoon, check it out. And, uh. The family room, while the existing deck is elevated. Uh, you know, one, one floor above the patio. And that would be enclosed into that future family room, and then the new deck would extend out again up at that elevated level. One floor above the patio. And, uh. Actually, it looks a lot more wide open out there than what you see on this. This little plan, so I, I saw no problem in it.
All right, we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to just add to that, working with Madison, I never knew her, remember? She was so helpful and guided us through what was needed, we needed to have, and always responded, so. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to article seven, which is case number twenty-three dash three seven five zero Lance. Corham. Um, staff presentation.
Let's zoom out so we can see. Okay. All right, we have Lance and Claire Corhorn. Um, they are applying for a variance to, it's more of a unique situation at eighty-one eighty-five thirty-sixth street. Um, so this is a residential property with an old schoolhouse on the property. That the applicant has been renovating and he. Um, applied to put up a sign and then the sign got put up before it was actually approved, so now we're going through to try. Um, to get a variance to have a larger sign than is permitted in his district. So the details of that sign are, there's an image of it here on the right side, so that's an actual image of the existing sign. Um, it is. Um. Twenty square feet, um. And the sign that is permitted in his district is only five square feet, it's a residential district, the sign, um. Was erected prior to approval and he spoke with the planning director about, you know, the possibilities, and this is where we landed on. Um, getting a variance before removing the sign, so the. A R C district. With a residential use. Um, he has permitted a five square foot sign. Um, and a nameplate not exceeding eight square feet. Um, if it were a municipal sign, he would be able to have up to sixty-four square feet. So the ordinance was limiting his options for signs in this unique circumstance to bring attention to the historical landmark. Um, the sign is sixty-two by forty-five. Um, and the sign face that's actually painted is fifty by thirty-eight. Um, and the sign is sitting. Twelve and a half to thirteen feet from the road's edge. Um, it's made of brick, it's painted, um, the applicant speaks to the history of the. Property and the sign, um, in his narrative that I included, should be included. Um, about the Gove Schoolhouse. So, the. When we looked at the findings of fact, you know, there was. We had to consider the distance from the road, so. It is within the right of way as it is, so we're not looking for approval of the distance, just the size, just to clarify, um. When we looked into. The. Three criteria, the surrounding uses around him are you kind of mixed, so there's some residential, some agricultural. And, um, we didn't see that this sign would be detrimental. To the public in any way, and the applicant might even be able to speak to how he has found the sign to even slow traffic to. Um, people who it's caught their attention, um. The second criteria is where we kind of had a hard time. The property is unique in that it's a historical landmark of sorts and we wanna, you know, hope to. Preserve that and encourage that, it's one of our values here in the township and, um. The unique circumstance in that he would need a sign is valid, but not necessarily. This specific sign is one I couldn't. Fully justify needing, um, so that was the one criteria that I couldn't fully argue that it was needed. Um. But I don't think that granting the variance would be opposing to, you know, the intent or objectives of our sign ordinance. So because I couldn't approve all three criteria or argue for the sign that it was needed. I did recommend that it was denied, but if it were to be approved by you all, um. We would make a note that we have since. Added a condition after hearing from the road commission that he would have to move the sign to be twenty-one feet from the road's edge. Um. That the property continues its use in compliance with the A R C district. Um, the applicant might be able to speak better to the use on the property, I believe it's just supposed to be residential. Um, and then the building department will also require that the signs still get a proper permit. So those are my, my findings, is there any questions?
You said the sign is definitely in the road right away?
Yes.
Okay. You said that the sign does not. Appear to be in. Conformity with neighboring properties. Correct, you talked about farming and residential.
Which section are you looking at?
I think on the first part.
The surrounding uses are mixed.
Okay.
Um.
Think you may have mentioned that there's nothing similar.
Yeah, there's.
Do we not have a golf course adjacent to this property?
Yeah, it's to the north and east.
Okay. That property has a sign?
Not on the street that I know of. But they're a commercial.
The zoning is different.
Correct, but it's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, the golf courses, yes.
Courses.
Yep. Yeah, so there's kind of that jumble of uses is what I was trying to speak to.
Okay.
What, what is the exact distance from the road edge?
The site plan submitted says thirteen point two feet, when I went out and measured, I got twelve and a half.
But it says here it's twenty-three feet. situated about twenty-three feet from the road's edge.
What number are you looking at?
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, ass.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the houses, yeah, so the house is conforming.
And you said that the road commission would require that the sign be moved.
It would be moved back to, I have an email here from Tim Haxma. Um, that it would have to be twenty-one feet from the road's edge, so I would add that as my condition, the third condition would be updated to that. And Lance has spoken with Tim himself and is aware that that would be required.
You talked to him today.
I don't think that I have other questions for staff.
Okay.
Actually, I do, so. I didn't see in the packet. A zoning map of the different parcels in the area, but I gather that all of these different parcels that there's a variety, so it's a little bit like a patchwork, so we've got this one. Which is, and remind me.
So this is a, um, in the A R C district.
But then the neighboring properties are farming?
They're different P U Ds.
Okay, oh, 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 okay.
So they have their own set of, yeah, you know, ordinances.
And then the golf course presumably.
They have their own conditions, the zoning is still the underlying.
Correct.
Zone, the P U D is an overlay of the zoning.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Cause I don't think Quail Ridge is a commercially zoned property, it's a P U D. Okay. And that appears that it does have one signed entrance of brick.
Oh.
A brick entrance.
Is that on thirty-six?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that is thirty-six.
That's a, yeah.
So further down past him.
Which looks sizable, but a distance, yeah.
So it's part of the landscape, but it is a sign, okay? All right, um. With that, we would, uh. Any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll open it up to the applicant, if they have any concerns or questions, presentation they want to talk about? Was he Lance, you've done this before, so name and, uh, address for the records?
Yeah, Lance Corhorn, uh, address is thirty-four eighty Butrick, right around the corner from the schoolhouse. Uh, so really with this sign, we just wanted to highlight the historical significance of this structure, it was, uh, in my family for. A long time prior to its, uh, ownership that we purchased it from, so. Uh, Quail Ridge, the surrounding golf course was my family's farm, and so really just wanted to. Add, uh, you know, a little character to where the schoolhouse is, more than anything.
Can I ask you a question about the sign?
Sure.
So. You, you've gone on a, a specific theme, do you have any records of what the original signage would have been for that building?
We don't, actually, we have not found a single image of the exterior of the structure, being the oldest schoolhouse in the township.
But it is a schoolhouse.
Yeah.
It has a specific name.
Yep.
I know at least one person who went there.
Really?
Long time.
What were your grades?
I had to.
Blacky, uh, Blacky, it's Blacky's TV, uh, he stopped over the other day and he went to school there.
Who was that?
Blacky, uh, from the TV store, so. Cool to hear, hear his stories of, that's one of the things people recognize this now and have stopped by and a family member went to school there or. Something along those lines.
Are you good with the staff's recommendations?
Yes, uh, spoke with road commission today and recommended that we move it back a little bit further, the. School is, I believe, closer than twenty-one feet to the road, and I spoke with them about that, and you know, it's, it's. Right in that range, so.
So is that, is that on a foundation or are you?
It is a poured slab and then a brick sign.
Okay, so you're not cross wall?
What, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Can, can the sign be moved to a new foundation without tearing it all apart?
No, uh, the thought would be probably to slide it. Carefully.
Yeah.
Further back, um. Yeah.
So how, is the sign similar in? Style to the golf course sign?
Very some, similar brick, uh, different font, I would say, there's a, um. Three D. Quail Ridge over, you know, attached to the sign where ours is hand painted.
Ac- actually, it looks really nice, I drove out there and it's.
Yeah.
Very attractive, it looked, it, it fits in with the schoolhouse, I mean. I would have thought that's maybe what they would have put out there, you know, seventy years ago.
Uh-huh, with the ghost letters, it's not overpowering.
Right, not at all, it's very, it's not like it's a garage sale, not today or something, it's not like that at all.
Here's my only hesitation with this, we do not have any sort of rules in place for historic signage, I mean, I live in the Spalding Farmhouse. I'm not, I mean, I, would I then want to plunk out a sign? You know, in my front yard saying this is a Spalding Farmhouse, I just, I worry about setting precedent.
It, it begs the question of. If the state were to say to you. We, we see your house as, uh, historic significant, if, if an organization, a nonprofit were to recognize you for some. Reason and want to. Put a. Three by four sign out there.
But it has. But I'm saying it.
I can comment on that, that I'll give them after public hearing.
Right.
I, I, I agree, given, given the, that, um, the applicant is willing to, to move the sign so it's in compliance with the right of way, that addresses the other concerns that I had. From a safety standpoint, I just, I, I'm just trying to be a little bit cautious about not. I, if, if there's, if there's a plan to address the issue of signage from a historical perspective on a going forward basis. That addresses the concerns that I have because people can then follow those, but they might look to this as. A guide as of what, what will be acceptable, and I want to be clear that this is a special circumstance for a variety of reasons.
Okay, well, let's do, let's do this, let's, um, as far as from the applicants, as are there any questions of the applicant?
No. Thank you.
All right. With that said, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
We have motion to support to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, we are in public hearing.
Any other comments, man, by the way?
I didn't receive any, no.
Okay. Anyone online? All right, with that said, I would entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support to close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, we have closed public hearing, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, um. I, I like staff's recommendations to deny the sign, I think by ordinance. Uh, staff's recommendations are correct. To deny the sign. Um, I don't like signs, especially billboards, however. I drove out there and I looked at this and I thought, yeah, this, it's an attractive sign, and. I look, first, first of all, as staff pointed out, this is not detrimental to any nearby property owners, if you drive out there, this is not like a, a busy neighborhood. With a big, you know, uh, for sale sign or, or garage sale or whatever, it's. There, there's no other residences out there, and, and so there's not detrimental, there, no negative comments have been received, but more importantly, I think the exception is. This is an historic schoolhouse, so I, I agree with Jennifer, you want to be careful about setting precedent, but. I'd see this as the only, I mean, I don't think there are many times where we have been a historic schoolhouse. Uh, that, that comes up, so. You know, um, I think it's, it's an attractive sign, I, I don't think it really sets a precedent, cause I don't think there are going to be many other people coming and saying. Well, I have a, a historic schoolhouse in Cascade, one of the first in Cascade, so I think that's such an exception that I, I would. Uh. I would approve this, um, with staff's recommendations, is my feeling.
I think the additional factors that, that weigh into that decision, at least in my mind, are the fact. Uh, or the circumstances surrounding, um, where it's located and the, of the outlined areas, it's not as if this. Schoolhouse is, you know, uh, it.
In a congested.
In a congested area where you have a lot of single-family home residences, you know, back to back where. Um, it might be an impediment to, to either traffic or to sightlines or to people's enjoyment of their homes. That, those circumstances don't exist here, so I see it as a little different, I just want to be very clear that in our decision. We are not setting this as a benchmark for other historic signage.
Correct. You know, I, I see this as. A, a, a play on words that, I don't necessarily see this as a sign, I see it as an identifier. Um, in that it's identifying something that's. That draws your attention to it as opposed to a sign that tells you of a destination, so.
Yeah.
Um. You know.
I mean, it's, it was very. I, I, I like how you put that, because it, it doesn't look like a sign.
Right.
It looks like something to identify an historic building. And, you know, I, I liked its design, um, it was not intrusive, uh, and, or obtrusive. Um, I, I didn't block any sightlines at all, but the road commission, if they want to move it back, that's, I get that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I did drive out there and, uh, parked and walked around the sign, actually walked around the house, it's kind of nice to, to see what they're doing to. Renovate the schoolhouse, it's a very rural feeling out there. I mean, it's very low density and the schoolhouse fits in nicely, I think the sign fits in nicely. Even, you know, where it's at right now, I, I like the way they've done the lettering.
Yeah, me too, it looked like it's.
A belong, a question for staff, so if we had an agricultural property that had. You know, your, your grand gate with a. Something across the top. What would be your criteria for measuring that as a quote-unquote sign?
Well, I think a gate would be more considered as a fence.
Is that deemed a sign?
No, that would sound, if you're saying a gate, that sounds more like a fence to me.
Well, i- if you took your two posts and put your.
Oh, how would it be? Considered?
Yeah.
Well, if it's for a farm, is that a commercial operation then, so then it would have different, um. Criteria altogether of what? Kind of signage it could have.
What about if it's for a neighborhood? Like if you drive, this is not in Cascade, but if you drive down Grand River or, and, or Pettis, some, you'll see those neighborhoods and they've got. You know, a, a quote-unquote sign, but it's up in the air, you know, suspended and quite.
Guessing that was part of the P U D.
Yes, so those, those get their own. Square footage, and we have a subdivision sign. Let me pull up the size. Still memorizing this thing?
I'm impressed you haven't memorized already.
Believe it's thirty-two square feet, but we.
She just had that one photo. That said, this is what it was in nineteen forty.
I know, right?
We spent, we spent hundreds of hours searching for it.
Okay, so. It matches the golf course in look and feel, so that even if it isn't a callback to how it looked historically. There's a reference point there, so it's.
We use the bricks that we use for that as well, we're in Wildby Street, uh, normally downtown, so it has historic.
Mm-hmm.
Manufacturing.
Um, so section six point zero two signs permitted in the A R C, um, if it's a subdivision identification sign. Um, at the entrance of the road, a minimum of twenty-five feet from the pavement. Um, a subdivision development sign not to exceed sixty-four square feet in sign area.
But, but I don't, again, I don't see a subdivision. No, being anything related to this, this is.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said.
This has exceptional conditions.
Oh, they did.
Historic schoolhouse, yeah. I, I mean, I, I'll just, I make a motion, um, that we approve. The variance with staff's conditions because there are exceptional conditions, such as it being an historic schoolhouse. And the, the, there are conditions that will put it more in compliance with what the road commission wants as well.
I'll support that.
Any discussion? Hey, we have a motion and support on the table. Everyone understand what the motion is?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to difficult things, article five, or article eight, election of officials. There are current conditions that preclude me from continuing as this seat.
I'm an alternate, don't look at me.
And, so lose that here, so.
So we have three available. People.
Lou.
Cause you cannot.
I cannot.
There's three positions and three people.
Well, there's two, two positions, three people. Val has, uh, played the role of chair in the past.
And Rob, that's right. You were recently, right?
Was that recent?
No. Oh, excuse me, yes.
That last meeting. You've had practice is what you're saying.
Ken, 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 vice chair. I sat in and conducted a meeting when Aaron was gone.
So you got experience. So with that said, any, uh, anyone want the position?
I, I'm happy to serve if, if you want me.
Any other nominations?
I move, we, uh, have Ralph as, uh, chair and Valerie as vice chair.
Let the record reflect, one of accepted the nominations.
Uh, do we need an official motion? Um,
That's what I just did.
Or I mean, official, uh,
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, uh, for Ralph as chair, Val as vice chair. All, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Through pretty quickly, didn't you?
Um, articles will lump these kind of together that nine, ten, eleven, twelve uh, are of record uh, for review. If anyone has any questions, obviously we can discuss further, but, um, more housekeeping. Article thirteen is your twenty twenty-three calendar. So if anyone sees conflict, please let staff know sooner rather than later. Uh, I don't, or Article fourteen, other business, any other business out there?
I believe the only note he was gonna put was the training opportunities with, uh, Michigan Association of Planning. And I think he included them in the packet.
I'd like to make two notes for other business. Um, one, I had the discussion with Brian briefly, but, um, as we've gone down that path of cargo containers, uh, seeing many more of those popping up, um, I would highly request that the planning commission take that up as an item of interest. Um, again, construction is very much using them, uh, on a periodic basis. And I do see a couple of them out there that are looking like they're quasi-permanent conditions um, that have brought to Brian's attention. Um, so that would obviously need to be brought up to those landowners. But it's going to be one of those things we're going to continue to have. And if we brought a Meyer and the Walmart to the table, um, we need to stay consistent. So and my second item is the islands over at Centennial. Um, throughout the business park, continue to be a hazard, to say the least. Uh, with many vehicles driving straight through the center of those. The markers are gone. Um, you're dealing with a different clientele of drivers over there as well as winter conditions. So I would recommend that the board, the township board make note of that to the road commission, if that's their jurisdiction in there.
Can I jump in on that?
Yeah.
Um, the D D A discussed this at our last meeting. And, um, I believe, and I'm testing my memory here, that it was decided to have, um, new markers put in at least on a temporary basis because there used to be markers there and
There's a couple.
Plowed, yeah, there's like one or two left. And apparently there used to be some in all of the islands at um, and then they're also going to explore, um, perhaps some, um, plantings. So the issue
Like a tree?
Uh, you, you can't put a tree because the road commission won't allow it. Like the road commission has um, limitations on what you can put in those islands. And the, the D D A debated, you know, do we want a planter? Do we want, you know, a tree? Do we want a bush? Do we want a marker? And so we, we kind of delegated to Sandra to interface with the road commission to figure out what we can do. So you might, you might connect with Sandra as you're going through those issues. I've driven over them.
Yeah, over through.
Yeah.
Um, the ruts are deep enough that if you're
The snow. You can't see it.
You're gonna pick out the bottom. So and I'm just concerned that you're gonna see some people bouncing off them sooner rather than later. So when it is rainy, half the lights are on, half aren't. So there's a lot of glare going on as well. So it's very hard.
I think it was a bad idea to start with, frankly.
Would as far as to say horrible.
Traffic calming.
Can I ask, was there any specific locations where you saw more containers that I should look into?
Um, there's at the, um, hotels over to the west of Meyer.
Okay.
And I do believe there's a couple at M V P or M V A, the field house behind Meyer.
I'm suspecting Meyer may have moved them there. Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Other business, other business, Ralph?
Uh, property at sixty-four eighty Cascade Road is now vacant.
And clean.
Thank Madison for leading that charge.
Was quite a process.
Uh, are they out of there or is that?
They're out.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that said, how much maybe speculation wetlands was filled in?
Oh, no.
In the back?
Yeah.
I haven't heard any complaint about.
I just, on occasions saw a bobcat driving around the building and obviously with that backyard being adjacent to
Yeah.
The wetlands would be concerning that some got dumped back there.
Okay, I can look into that.
Just curious, obviously areas would illustrate what was and what is, so.
Okay.
It was pretty obvious to me that, uh, he was running a business out of that garage, car repair business or some kind of car related business. I just got tired of seeing all these trucks and trailers sitting out there on that property.
I can see, you know, driveways full, one more person shows up par- parallel, but these diagonal randomness.
Well, the whole backyard was full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Excellent. Um, any other business? Hearing none, Article fifteen adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sport, motion and support adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries.
And that's just let you know this crapped out again.
It did?
Yeah, as soon as I go to scroll on a PDF, it just, it just pulls up blank. So.